Good evening, everyone. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, my name is John Greco. The Eden Middle School students would like to thank you for serving our school on the Board of Education. Your time and dedication to our school is greatly appreciated.
Hello, my name is Trey Rosigliano. The Eden High School Student Council would like to thank you for your leadership, your commitment to the students in our community, and for your support of our mission to continually improve the education system for our students. The district is without a doubt better because we have you on our team. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you also. You have two gift bags. The striped gift bag is from the Middle School Student Council and the white bag is from the high school. And there's gift cards in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So now we'll have, is there more? Transportation presentation with Mrs. Banquo.
Sorry, what my presentation has a whopping two slides, but it does have a video, so I did want to make sure that it is presenting Mr. Watson. Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay if I stand back just a little bit? Thank you. This year in the transportation department, we really have three major goals that we're working on for the current school year. First of all, I wanted to talk about how we are working to achieve our portion of the district 2223 goals. Our staff understands that we're an extension of the student's school day. And for us, goal number two aligns with our department very nicely. It talks about ensuring, creating, and fostering a safe and welcoming environment for all students by embracing diversity and choice where all students of all academic abilities and backgrounds feel welcome, valued, and engaged. While we might not be providing an educational program, our staff fully embraces the concept that we are the first people that the students meet each day and we're the last students or the last people that they meet every day. So as an extension of the school day, our staff really feels strongly that they can help get a kid ready to meet the school day, to make them feel warm and welcome, unbiased, and really ready to be educated when they get to school. This is a goal that our department has had for a lot of years and we feel strongly about continuing that endeavor. The second thing I wanted to talk tonight about is electric vehicles, which is new and upcoming in our state. They're coming whether we like it or not, I believe. We're learning as much as we can. There are a bunch of people in this district that are getting ready to, you know, learn as much as possible. Our head mechanic and myself have been going to meetings and learning as much as we can. One thing we've learned is that they're very expensive. We were not eligible for the first round of funding, but hopefully we will be for the upcoming funding. They do have some challenges. They, on a, on a good charge, they get 100 miles. No wind, no rain, no, no snow, nothing, no hills, nothing that would be part of the Eden School District. But we're learning as much as we can and hopefully by the time it's our turn to buy electric vehicles, we will be ready and the technology will be improved a little bit, so we're ready to go for it. The final, the third major initiative we have in the transportation department this year is actually about training to avoid what's preventable. So I've been working with the State Ed Department for the last several years and through my, through my work, I've been teaching the bus driver and the attendant basic course for the State Ed Department. And one thing it's given me the opportunity to do is to really dig deeply and take a good look at how we train our kids and how we train our staff. So for me, this is our biggest initiative this year. It's, it's a huge initiative. It's something that, that I hold near and dear to my heart. I have just a short video if Mr. Watson can just cue the first 15 seconds of it. I'd like you to take a look at the video of a school bus driver actually from New York State in 19, 2019, so just a few years ago.
Was being called a hero after she saved a student from being hit by a speeding car.
The terrifying moment was caught on surveillance cameras.
All right, so what, what do you, I hate to ask a question, but what do you take from that video? If, if anyone's willing to speak up.
Well, the driver was obviously really watching the traffic and everything as that kid was getting up as she was right there to pull that kid back to safety as that, as that kind of went by.
Okay, all right, thank you. So obviously, we can never stop a passing motorist from doing things that are unsafe or where they're not thinking. But what I've learned over the last several years is that we really need to take a hard look at how our district and every district follows procedures for loading and unloading. So if we, we're going to take a look at that video again in a few minutes. But we can never stop passing motorists for making bad choices, but we can do everything in our power. Our drivers, attendants, monitors, parents, teachers, staff, to make sure that we're following all of the procedures and that we're training our kids to follow all the procedures. So things like you saw in the video happen, not just on busy streets, not, not just on Main Street in Eden, but they happen right here in our, our rural and our, our side streets. For example, it happened on Weller Road, Weller Drive just last year, we had a bus pass or a car pass a bus when it was loading a student. So it happens everywhere and our goal this year is to really make sure that every student, every parent, every staff member is fully trained on the entire process. Because it's very, it's very easy to become almost complacent and know that you need to let your kids know they need to go up far enough to look at your signal, but there's a lot that happens before that. And that's what we're really working hard on this year. So I'd like to ask Mr. Watson to play that 15 seconds just one more time.
A New York school bus driver is being called a hero after she saved a student from being hit by a speeding car.
The terrifying moment was caught on surveillance cameras.
All right, so part of our training and part of the things we're working on this year are the things that, that we, that we don't see that are kind of in the background. So in that first six seconds, the student didn't stay behind the white line. The driver didn't have a chance to stop, stop, turn the reds on, make sure traffic was stopped, and then let the student down. We can only make a guess that that student was probably going to step right off the bottom stuff, step without looking. One of the, one of the processes is to stop at the bottom step, take a look both directions, make sure there's no traffic, and then get off the bus. So in our district this year, we're really taking a hard look at what we do, how we do it, and how we can keep our kids safe. So we're using a whole bunch of different training methods. We did in August, we had the preschool and the kindergartners, we invited them in, it was voluntary. We, we ended up with about 60 kids, which I thought was pretty great for our first time. But the last week of August, we invited preschool and kindergarten into the bus garage. We took them on a bus ride, we told them a little bit about the bus, we taught them how to get off, we taught, taught them all those little steps in, in kindergarten mode. We do the first week of school, we do at the GLP, we do, actually, it's a really neat Disney Winnie the Pooh video that was made for bus safety where Christopher Robin forgets his lunch and the characters have to take his lunch to him and then they go on a bus ride and they get to practice crossing and getting off the bus. We did our first ever Eden Elementary Assembly this year where we talked a little bit about bus safety and then watched, some of you probably remember the, the egg video where the kid drops his dinosaur egg and he learns how to cross the road and everything. Our drivers do continual training every single day, but it's so tough for a driver because they're teaching them a little bit at a time. They have everything else going on in the bus and they're still trying to teach them safety. So they're doing little reminders, "Don't forget to look at me." "Don't forget to hold the handrail," things like that. We have attendants and monitors and this is where Eden is incredibly fortunate this year in achieving this initiative. We're very fortunate not only to have a really amazing attendant team, but we also have school aides who have been willing to cross train, become bus attendants and ride the bus with the kids. So we're teaching the kids one-on-one, whether that's preschool or whether that's 11th grade, because if we have 11th graders that are choosing not to follow the rules, our bus attendants are getting off with them and they're going through the whole process with them. So for us in our department, this year, we're working really hard on following the district goal of making everyone safe and secure. We're learning about electric vehicles and our big initiative this year is making sure that all of our students stay, stay safe so they arrive at school and arrive at home safely. Questions from anyone?
Does, does every bus have an aide on it?
Every bus does not have an aide on it. We are very fortunate to have cross-trained school aides that have been able to help us out, but we definitely do not have enough staff for that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Banquo. Appreciate it. Nice job, Mary.
All right, so Mr. Servoni has our middle school goal.
Check, check. Hi, good evening, Board of Education. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Jeff Servoni. I'm the middle school principal and I am here to present on our middle school goals this year. So every year, we always, as principals and administrators, create goals for our schools. We meet with the superintendent, we chat, talk about goals. They're always meant to align with board goals and help support the board and district goals. We also meet with our faculties, review the district goals, talk about our goals as administrators, and then get their input on how do we as a middle school support district goals? What are we already doing? What can we do? So we had a great faculty meeting last week. We talked about all three of the board goals, talked about my goals, and came up with some really good stuff. All right, board goal number, am I doing this right, Brandon? Okay. Can you, are we good? You guys can see that? All right, so board goal number one is student achievement. Obviously, this is always one of our main goals as a middle school. As you can read underneath goal one, continue to set a foundation for the development of a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of student supports. If you remember during COVID, we put MTSS into place. We did this really to address our struggling students and we wanted to create a system in our school that was able to identify and address students that were struggling both academically and socially and emotionally. We continue with this mission. I would say we've kind of ramped it up, amped it up a notch this year with some really targeted professional development. A lot of this is thanks to Mrs. Gregory, who is partnering with us at the middle school. So one of the big things as we start to focus on student achievement through this multi-tiered system of supports is we're starting to train our staff. We've got a big training coming up on the 21st. Both these professionals coming in to, you know, lay some groundwork down on how we start to implement these, you know, tier one or classroom level supports. We also are focusing on, as we saw in our special education audit, that we have a need as a staff and a faculty to be better versed on special education vocabulary and the definitions of different disabilities. So that's a big focus. With that common knowledge and language, we feel we ultimately will serve our students better, which will lead to higher student success. One of our new programs that we implemented this year is a screening tool called iReady. In the past, we use something called FastBridge. So what it does is it, you test students in math and reading three times a year. Early in the year, obviously, we want to get early data, mid-year, and then the end of the year. And the hope is that you find growth, but also in that information is what guides instruction. We get to look at students in a very detailed mathematical way. And as we meet and analyze data, it allows us to say, oh, this student is struggling here. What's working, what's not, what can we implement? So programs like iReady really help us take an analytical data look at our students. What's really cool about iReady is after it does the data analysis, it then creates something called MyPath, which creates a learning path for students that are struggling the most, but it creates them for all students. But our students that struggle do take AIS, which is Academic Intervention Services. And this program actually creates a path to help them get better academically. So we're pretty pumped about it. It's just started, so we're just getting into it. But it certainly is something that is, I believe, will help student achievement in Eden Middle School. Second thing we're starting this year is Panorama. Panorama is another diagnostic tool that works on social, emotional. So it's the mental health piece. We know that students that are mentally healthy learn better. Panorama will be given during PE. We're thinking three times a year. It's a series of questions that the students take on their laptops and we're hoping that through this diagnostic tool, we're able to catch students that we may not normally catch that are suffering with mental health issues. Some more to come on this program. We haven't done it yet. We're kind of making the, getting the questions in order and getting ready to administer it. Last bullet there, arrow, is Kagan Cooperative Learning. We started Kagan a little while ago. We continue to focus on Kagan. As I observe teachers, we still see Kagan strategies. For those of you that don't know what Kagan is, it's really a, a book of strategies that helps keep students engaged, behaviors in check, and it makes learning fun. It's a lot of interactive student-to-student type activities that teachers are utilizing in this district. I see it. I'm in every building observing to some degree. They've embraced it, they use it, and it's effective. So it's been a great, a great addition. Okay, continuing on with student achievement. This kind of came out of left field for us. We, we piloted, piloted this second step as a curriculum. And we piloted this a few years ago in health. And our health teacher in the middle school is Bill O'Hare. Students get health sixth, seventh, and ninth grade. Sixth graders get it for 10 weeks as a little elective. And I don't remember how it came about, but he said, can we try this curriculum? And it, it's so neat. It focuses on mental health, relationships, controversy, conflict with others, bullying, harassment, cyber, all of the things that all of our young people deal with every day. I love it for middle school, but it's just as effective secondary, you know, ninth through 12. Bill actually came up and he said, do you mind if I use this more? We're like, yeah, go for it, Bill. Are you kidding? It's, it's working great with our students. So that's another way we combat social, emotional learning and try to make our students, you know, healthy mentally. We offer a learning lab every period of the day. If any child has a study hall or wants to use a part of their lunch to go to a learning lab, we have a certified teacher that is in a classroom, willing to work with that student on any topic they need. Last bullet for goal one is data review. We normally try to do data review either by getting subs, which is nearly impossible today, or, you know, on a half day or during a PLC. PLC is a professional learning community that our teachers that do like maybe 10 or 12 times a year after school. This year, we're doing it on a conference day. So I'm excited to see the success. We're going to actually be able to sink our teeth into the data, let teachers really get into it, ask questions, and dissect it, which we normally don't have that luxury. Any questions on any of this so far? Okay, goal two. DEI, I still remember when we were sitting at Admin Council talking about creating goals. This is a big one. I think this has really gotten big lately. I would say as an educator, we've always on some level by our nature embraced diversity, equity, and are inclusive of everybody. But I think we have a lot of work to do in making everybody diverse, equitable, you know, equitable and inclusive. But underneath, continue to work by creating an inclusive middle school climate by building awareness and understanding of diversity and stressing the importance of being respectful and kind to all people. That really is a middle school philosophy in general. Once again, the second step program touches on this. So our kids get this sixth, seventh, and ninth. This is kind of neat. This just came to me recently. Abby Gazino, who's one of our newer PE teachers, does a lot with our unified athletics, which is the special education students that bowl and play basketball. Well, through the Special Olympics, they want us to start a youth activation committee, which is a group of students that promote DEI. This group would maybe participate in the polar plunge, have a spirit week, really just embrace diversity and being inclusive of our student population. So it hasn't happened yet. I'll report back on this, you know, if and when this happens, but we're excited about it. She's taking lead on this. Second thing we're trying to do is to partner our regular students with our students with disabilities and adaptive PE. We've struggled to do this through the schedule, but we're looking to do that and we see the importance of that, that matchup. Okay, second part of goal two is we have, we're looking at PD to train administrators, faculty, and staff around students with disabilities. What we're learning is we all don't know the same definitions and we all don't have the same knowledge base that we wish we did. So it's kind of neat that we've identified it and now we're going to address it. As always, we have social opportunities for everybody at the middle level. We have literacy nights, we have math and science nights with local colleges. We have dances, we have movie nights. We really do a lot of neat things at the middle level here. Club offerings, our GSA, Gay Straight Alliance is one of our most attended and robust clubs at the middle and high school level. We have a heroes' club that talks about comics and superheroes, robotics. The musical is the high school musical, but boy, a lot of middle schoolers are in this one or are in the musical and it will be heavy middle school this year. Just from talking to Matt Gould. And I currently have a ski club proposed to the superintendent that we're working out some details. So it's kind of a neat thing that we're hoping to get off the ground. Okay, third goal, I addressed it. I don't think this, I love this thing that this, what we do with this replacement cycle. We started this a couple of years ago. So we have this rotating equipment replacement cycle where we meet with department chairs. We have this much money and we say, how do we meet your needs in a cycle that gets things replaced in a timely manner? And it's been awesome. You know, we don't have endless funds, but we're able to say, in two years, we need this, in three years, we need this. We cycle through it. We've been able to replace and buy things that we never thought we could. So this continues and this will always continue as our focus on finances. Okay, thank you. And any questions?
Sorry, you'll have to, can you hear me?
Yeah.
For the record, I've COVID tested myself about a half a dozen times. And I apologize, but um, where are we or are we still considering? I know originally our goal was to create like a total middle school model. Are we still working towards that? I mean, I know it's hard because we're a smaller school and we don't have the staff to really create that, but I just didn't know if we're not talking about that anymore or.
Is your question for me or for Mr. Servoni?
For both of you, really. I don't know who to direct it to. It's kind of like a
I could start or pardon me, Jeff? I could start. The answer, you could jump in. Every year since its inception, this is the fifth year of the middle school, we continue to reduce shared staff. At one point, it was, you know, when it was seven through 12, you were just, you were anywhere as a teacher. We massively have pulled that back. We have very, there's very few shared staff. There are some. I don't know that you'll ever get away from that, but it's very limited. So that to me was a big part of making it a true middle school model. A lot of the curricular things, the benchmarking, all of that is middle school to me. The clubs are very, you know, they, all of those things that I mentioned that middle schoolers do are only offered to middle schoolers. So it's not like, you know, anyone can go. And there's certain things our middle schoolers can't do, even though they are together in the same building. So I'm proud of where we're, where we're coming and where we, we keep, you know, coming down the road. Go ahead, Jeff. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, the suggestion I would make to you, Mr. Servoni, is to look at your goal number three and, and how you could maximize the staffing you have along with identifying any staffing need you may have to create a fully comprehensive middle school model. Okay, so I, I wasn't here when the inception of the middle school came about, so I don't know what the discussions were. I'm not exactly sure what parts are missing. But it's a discussion that you and I have had.
Sure.
And, and while these might be your yearly goals, there's elements that are going to take a number of years to accomplish. And one of the things that you and I have talked about recently, and I know that one other board members asked me about in a private conversation, is where we are with our murals, especially for our sixth graders. So that would be, that would be a nice start because those, those students are not eligible to play on any of our scholastic teams. Those are the two, two bits of advice I would give you today.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Servoni.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? All right, so. Remove it to B. Thank you. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Obstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position and time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There's a two minute time on it. Anybody? Okay, I guess we can. To the next new business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Catherine Taylor be accepted with an end date to be determined. The board administration wished to thank Mrs. Taylor for her service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, new business appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent. After successfully completing her probationary period. Alicia Plummer be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective November 16th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brenda Bergstaller be appointed as Claims Auditor effective October 13th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Brianna McCabe Fleming be permanently appointed as the cafeteria monitor effective October 16th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Then upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period. Thomas Birmingham be permanently appointed as a school monitor effective November 16th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the overnight band and orchestra trip to New York City, April 21st through the 23rd, 2023, be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bus routes be adjusted as per the attached spreadsheet.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the reserve plan updated October 12th, 2022, be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2021-2022 audit by Drescher and Malecki be accepted.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carry.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the electrical contract that be awarded to CIR Electrical in the amount of $59,580. Base bid $34,460. Alternate. Number one, gymnasium lighting installations, $25,120.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Toro Powership Snowblower Asset Tag Number 000180. Cub Cadet Snowblower Asset Tag Number 80A00184080.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Good evening. I just have one thing to report. New York State has released. The 2023 minimum wage. Which is going up to $14.20 on December 31st of this year. And I'm pleased to announce. That all the new substitute rates are at least at minimum wage, so it doesn't impact us negatively in any way.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a few quick updates. Clearly, the drainage project that I mentioned in our last meeting is fully underway. And if you've been up and down School View, you know that. That is a pretty extensive project. A little bit, a little bit more extensive than I expected. I did learn yesterday the traffic will be restricted to one lane near the high school on School View for at least another week to 10 days. So I want to thank the community for their patience and understanding thus far. I know that reduced traffic lane came about. And rather surprisingly to our community and probably to our drivers in our transportation department as well. So Mrs. Banko, thank you for your presentation earlier and thank you for making the necessary adjustments there. We will have additional work in that area. As I mentioned previously, National Grid will be installing electric pole on the district side of School View. Once that is completed, there'll be some trench work and other preparations. With to ensure that we'll be prepared for future installation work next spring or summer. There is, and I mentioned this before, there's a small possibility we will be connected to the grid before next fall. We need a number of things to to come our way and fall mine to be assured of that early connection. So we're still working on that. And I'm holding out hope that that happens. At this building, facade lighting will be installed. It was supposed to start this week. I'm hopeful that they start tomorrow. And that should take maybe three weeks to a month to complete. And that's the lighting, the LED lighting that will light up the front of. Eden Elementary. This week is Go Pink Week, and I want to thank Teresa Blaze Lester. She's a third grade teacher at the elementary school for organizing Go Pink Week and supportive breast cancer awareness. Donations are being accepted in each of our schools for the Making Strides Walk, the schedule for October 22nd. You're welcome to join that walk if you'd like. I want to take this opportunity to remind our community to stay current with their physical appointments and their cancer screenings. Really, detection is key to successful treatment. Finally, October is Board Recognition Month. Month. This evening, we heard from a few folks and there's certainly a lot of very nice gifts on the front table here. And they were sharing their appreciation appreciation for the members of the Eden Board of Education. Dave Lowry is here as well, showing his appreciation. Thank you for being here, Dave. I too share my appreciation for the work that each of you do in ensuring this district is running smoothly and effectively. And for your steadfast commitment to ensuring a high quality education for each of our students. Or members can be, board membership can be quite rewarding, but like other areas of life, rewards only come when the hard work is put in. Please know that I appreciate your stewardship, your guidance, and your efforts. Many thanks for all that you do. Thank you.
Okay, student report. Trey.
Again, I'd just like to thank the board for their continued work to make Eden such a great place. But. For the student side of things, we've had a very busy month. September was very busy getting back into that school routine. Just a few weeks ago, we had our homecoming week, so we had spirit days for students to dress up and. Just getting the homecoming spirit. We had a bonfire one of the nights. We had food and games on the turf. That Friday of Homecoming Week, we had a pep rally, so a lot of students participated in activities on the turf. It was a bit chilly, but it was a very fun time. And then that Saturday night, we had a dance, which was very nice to have. Other than that, we have have a few other events. Today, some students took PSATs. Coming up next week, the National Honor Society Organizations will be inducting members. And then looking to the end of the month, we have Halloween coming up, so we will definitely have. A costume contest and some spirit type activities for Halloween. Other than that. That's all I got.
Okay, board report roundtable.
I would just like to thank. The district for these. Beautiful gifts, whoever participated and they're very appreciated. Not expected, but appreciated and. You know, for me, this is. I don't know. I lost count. It's like I'm a marriage. You kind of lose count after a while, but. It's an honor and it's. Usually fun, sometimes a little stressful, but. You know, we enjoy doing what we do and helping move Eden along. To be the great place that it is. So thank you.
I just want to add my thanks to. It's pretty overwhelming, but it was really wonderful. So. I appreciate all your good. Thoughts and the nice presence and totally unnecessary. Because it's an honor to work with this group. No, it really is. We enjoy working with each other, but thanks a lot. Okay, so the next regular Board of Education meeting. Is Wednesday, November 16th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And now. Executive session, but could we go to B?
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.